Justice for all.
My public input, I believe we have someone with the right to address this council. Would you please identify yourself?
Let's classify it. My name is Glen O'Kensy and I have been a very happy resident of the city of Linsburg for five years. The new mayor, the new council members, brought them on board. And those that have been here, I think you've done a great job because one of the prior newsletters that was part of the survey showed we had very high ratings amongst our members of Linsburg. Yeah, when we did the meeting, my conversation, I boosted you all up. Several months ago, Westar Energy had indicated through the news media that there would be something like a forty to sixty million dollar rebate going to all of the utility users. Now, fully trusting the news media, I called Westar and verified that. What I had heard, secondhand information, is that the city of Linsburg will be getting funds, but they are not going to be distributed to the people that paid the electric bills. And I think this is a little unfair, but what I have is a suggestion. Everybody lives here for five years and having seen what we're doing, I think we can do a tremendous amount in this town. To help the store owners, to help the restaurant doors, and that is to really start decorating Main Street more than what it is. Recently, I was down in Person, they have decorations turning up and down on light posts that light up at night. Other towns, you can have them cross the street from one light post to another light post, and this way it will help the business in the town of Linsburg. And that's pretty much all I have to say, except for one other thing. This should not be an expensive amount we pass on to these retailers or merchants. It shouldn't be a city expense, and the money you'll be getting, we don't get it, shouldn't be going towards them. And thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. And I am assuming you are talking about Christmas decorating? Is that right?
Yes.
Right, okay. Thank you, thank you. Any other public input? Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. First part of the mayor's report is a proclamation. And would you like to step forward? Anybody that doesn't know, this is Glenn Supas, and I'd like to read a proclamation from the city of Linsburg. Whereas the city of Linsburg acknowledges January 21st, 2019, as a day of recognition of an outstanding citizen and 2019 Superintendent of the Year. And whereas the city of Linsburg wishes to recognize Glenn Supas as an educator, administrator, and superintendent, serving this monkey valley, the school district, and Kansas. And whereas Glenn Supas' commitment and dedication to his profession and students is exceptional and inspirational. And whereas Glenn Supas is appreciated for his personal involvement and contributions to the Linsburg community. And whereas the Kansas School Superintendent's Association have bestowed upon Glenn Supas the honor of Superintendent of the Year 2019. Be it resolved that the city of Linsburg acknowledges Glenn Supas as an outstanding educator, superintendent, respected citizen, and the Kansas School Superintendent's Association 2019 Kansas Superintendent of the Year. Now therefore, I becking Anderson by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, to urge the citizens of Linsburg to join with me in proclaiming January 21st, 2019, as Glenn Supas Day. In witness mirror, I hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Linsburg to be affixed this 21st day of January 2019. Congratulations, Glenn. Thank you. Okay, there we go. All right. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Give us your words you'd like to say, please, go right ahead.
All right, you said over with that question. What an honor, and I thank you very much. I just have a couple of words, and then I'll go. The result of my being nominated and then ultimately selected as Superintendent of the Year is because of the wonderful school system we have. And the school system is a result of this community and the support, like partners that we have, like the city of Linsburg. Greg and I have worked together for the nineteen years I've been here, and we have had an amazing relationship with the city. And you guys have supported us for so many things, and I appreciate that. This whole community coming together to support this school, this district, is a result of this, and so it's kind of cool that it's Glenn Supas Day. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. January meetings. This Wednesday is, it's called City Hall Day.
Local Government Day.
The Local Government Day at the Capitol, and a number of people from this council and staff will be attending on that day. We will be meeting with our representative Stephen Johnson and our Senator Woodmore, and talk to them about the legislative priorities that we have adopted from this council. So that is this Wednesday. Saturday is a new crazy thing called the Swedish Lululeu. It'll be a fun afternoon put on by the members of the ad hoc committee. So if you're looking for something to do, put your grass skirt on and come down to their town from two to four, oh, four, five, two to five, all right. And there's more information about all of that on Facebook. And one final thing is this coming Sunday is the first rehearsal for the Messiah Festival. Rehearsals begin at three o'clock in Presser Hall, and all new singers are in. And I should say one more thing, I'm just thinking about this. Mark Lucas at Bethany College will be hosting Real Men Sing. That is on Thursday, I think this is maybe like the fifth, fourth or fifth year that he's had this. He's going to be just a little shy of a thousand singers. These are young men, fifth through 12th grade, I believe it is. They will be in Linsburg all day that day rehearsing with various directors. And then there is a free concert open to the public, I believe it's at 2:30. It's pretty amazing. You see a thousand young boys up there at Presser Hall and all that. It's fabulous. And so that's also on Thursday, this Thursday afternoon. Anybody else have any things that you know? Okay. All right. So, and then we'll go through the agenda here. Do I have a nominee, or anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Could we approve?
For your second?
Second.
Rossy.
David.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
The consent agenda was approved? Are there any appointments? Here, are you planning to meet?
Good evening, members of the city council.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You can arrange your office.
Where do you live?
So we're looking at replacing some of the Jaws of Life equipment. It includes a spreader, cutter, and ram. The difference between this and the old, the old was actually connected by a hose to the truck, so it would go only to where you could run it from the truck to where you needed it. This equipment is actually manned by battery packs. Some of the issues we have with the newer vehicles, the old Jaws just won't work on them correctly, so the new Jaws equipment would be able to handle some of the newer vehicles. We're looking at purchasing half of the equipment. The old department should be purchasing the other half. We also look at the cups replacing the batteries. The batteries were much cheaper with Oakie Extrication, so I'm looking for a motion to purchase the Jaws of Life equipment from Oakie Extrication in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
I'd like to make the motion to approve thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars to purchase the Jaws of Life equipment from Oakie Extrication. Your second?
Second.
Would you consent to approve this purchase? Is there any discussion?
Jim, Chief, when the two departments share, is the equipment always located at the same place? Or rural fire, is there truck leaves here too?
There are some rural trucks that respond to all fires, fires that are in the country and then fires that are in the city. So the equipment would be held on one of the rural fire trucks that respond to both city and rural calls.
And then how old are the other Jaws of Life? They've got to be pretty old, don't they?
Yeah, they were purchased right around the time when everything changed, which is, it's been twenty, twenty years.
Thank you.
I have limited knowledge on what the Jaws of Life really do. I've heard of it, I think I know what they might do, but can you explain when it says there's a spreader, a cutter, and a ram, what specifically you get from those functions?
It's like hydraulics. A spreader is something that goes in and then spreads stuff apart. The Jaws, the cutter is actually something that compresses and cuts. And I really have no idea with the ram. But, so like if you wanted to cut the top of the car off, you know, you go to each pillar and you cut it off. If you have a door that's jammed, you can actually sit that in there and pry it, pry it, spreads it open, and it pops open. So there, it's equipment for extrication of people who are trapped in vehicles.
Jim, does this company come out and show you about where these are equipped?
Yeah, and both of the companies that we have here listed, we've already had them come demonstrate their equipment and show us how they work. And so, yeah, we're aware of some of the companies that they work already.
And so is that the fire department that is in charge of these?
Fire Department.
Fire Department, okay. There any other questions?
I'd just like to ask, I think we need these, but have we ever used them?
Oh, yes, we have. We have to.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Rossy. David.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
EMT class.
So we're having an EMT class right now, and the class has approximately twelve people in the class. Four of them have indicated that they would be with the Linsburg EMS service. I don't know if that number will stay the same before the class is over, but that's what it is right now. Just seems like we always have one or two that drop out sometime during the class. But we have to pay HSHUCO for our students, and that amount is approximately fifteen hundred dollars per student. But we have, we can pay up to four thousand, five hundred, and we'll be okay with it, because I think one of them dropped out just the other day, so we're down with three. So I'm looking at four thousand, five hundred dollars. And they've applied for a grant through Kansas Department of Education or Board of Emergency Medical Services, and that grant money, we haven't gotten it yet. We've got it, but I don't think we've ever applied for that grant money and not got it, so there's very good chance we'll get the grant money. And it's about eleven hundred dollars per person. So we're looking at paying for the class now for the three, and then looking for reimbursement from them for the grant money, hopefully in their future. So we're actually, I need a request to pay up to four thousand, five hundred to pay, but the class will actually only cost us around twelve hundred dollars all the way. What I'm looking for tonight is a motion to approve, concede four thousand, five hundred dollars for the EMT class to be paid to Hudson Community College.
Would you like your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion?
Well, we're just paying for the ones who have indicated they might be willing to stay here.
Right.
And the other, who pays for that? Themselves or different fire departments?
Both. Both, either they're paying for it by themselves, or they're being, it's being paid for by whatever agency they're with.
They're transferring that they would for like a year, two years.
There's a, they signed a contract for two years.
And if they don't fulfill that?
Then if they don't, if they don't pass the testing, then they have to pay us back the full amount, and then they have to pay their grant back. So if they serve a certain amount of time and it's not full two years, then it's program ended.
Okay. Any other questions?
How are you on staffing as far as EMTs, Chief?
Up and down. If you look at our roster, there are a lot of people on our roster. If you look at active roster, it's pretty limited. You know, like you say, ten are really active, and the rest are, you know, but, you know, we have a few that are in medical school, and when they are in paramedic school, when they hit them, they're going to be coming back. So we have a lot of, you know, they can pick up one here or one there, but about ten are fairly active.
And does that keep them pretty well covered, or is that they be short a lot of the time?
We have short days.
Thank you. And when you have short days, what do you do?
I work for the EMS, or Mark's, you know, will help us cover.
Any other discussion? David.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Hello. As you guys know, the pool is normally budgeted to be repainted every five years, and the last time the pool was painted was in 2013. Last year, we went and looked to repaint it, and people that had previously done it thought that it actually still looked pretty together and thought we could make it another season, and we did. And so now we brought back three other vendors, or one of the same, I guess, and the two new vendors to come look at it again this year, and all three agreed that it needed to be sandblasted and painted. So I talked to creative for businesses, we only got two formal quotes. And so my recommendation is a motion to approve the bid of hardwood painting in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, eight hundred, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the bid of hardwood painting in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Your second?
Second.
And is the end here when this would all be done?
They, all three of them said that they would like to get started at least with the sandblasting, weather pending in March, so it could be started, it would be painted in April, beginning of May. We normally fill the pool around May 10th, May 11th, and so they all know that date is the day that we fill it.
I notice this exceeds the budgeted amount, but we have sufficient funds elsewhere to.
When we originally did the budget, we just carried it over from last year to this year, and so it reduced a little bit with the extra year in there, but I guess.
Any other comments? Hearing none. David.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yes. It was two meetings ago, the motion was adopted for the allocation of sales tax. Of course, at that time, we didn't have final sales tax numbers because we hadn't received December's revenue yet. This is more for information purposes. There is one clarification in the table on the proposed sales tax application. That total amount should be two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents. In the narrative, it talks about that, but it would be to pay for the website redesign, wireless presentation system, ball field construction, patrol car equipment, six tasers, two turnout sets, a hydro bag trailer, the John Deere loader, and the HVAC system in the Parks Department building that comes to an allocation of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents. This was approved prior meeting. This is an update, and there's no action that needs to be taken.
Anybody have a question to add for the time?
Yeah, I guess I do. When I, you know, when I'm following the tables where everything is listed, so that sixty-five thousand, five hundred and four dollars is the difference between what we allocated in the shortfall because we didn't have all the tax revenue? Is that right?
That, I don't know, don't ask me where that sixty-five thousand is.
Okay, well, that's really confusing me.
That's the number that's incorrect in there.
Okay. Well, it was really confusing me.
Yes.
Because I thought that's quite a lot, it wasn't for sixty-five thousand dollars.
That, that number should be two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Okay, yeah. I was having a hard time making it up. You know, sixty-five. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Just confirm the ball field construction for Southern York, that practice field? Correct.
Any other questions? All right. Chris?
This one confuses me. It's time for the next thing with street lights replacement. This will be the third year. This year, we looked at it a little differently. We asked for quotes that included photo cells with them. We have been replacing the last couple of years and reusing the old photo cells, and they work okay. The problem we have found with them is that when the lights fail, the photo cells leave the lights on. And during the day, if you don't notice this, it's on at night, it should be, this can end up burning up the balance. So there was some question, one way or the other, between the manufacturers we were talking to, trying to figure out whether or not these were actually workable for the lights or not. So we've started replacing some of them as they go out, but this year, we just went ahead and quoted it, they included the photo cells with them. That way, when we put them up, they'll be on there, and there's no questions. We're just looking for a recommendation, or a motion to approve the quote from Water States Electric for the purchase of LED streetlights and photo cells for seven thousand, sixty-eight dollars and three cents, and that includes tax.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
How many lights is this?
This is fifty-eight lights from Water States.
And this'll just be thirty left to do?
Yeah, that'll be around roughly thirty. I think we've got a few here and there that we've really not completely accounted for, but we'll get a good count, and then that would leave us a few extra to hang on hand.
Thank you. And these are just spread throughout the city?
The, this particular round are the, the streetlights at intersections and stuff out in for the residential vehicles. Downtown, Parisian and Colmore are a different style of lights. So these are more the residential lights that are.
I had someone ask me the other day, they thought they needed a streetlight for your residence, and I said I wasn't sure how those are, those places are selected.
Basically, just intersections, and if it's a real long block, there's typically one mid-block.
And this was a cul-de-sac?
A cul-de-sac. I don't know that we have any, any cul-de-sac, but we can sure look at.
I think that was one.
Yeah, that's somewhere we can sure look at. I think it should just be availability of wiring, and when there's not, there's anything around, we could do it, but if we haven't had it, we can sure look at.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? Any discussion on this? David.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Each year, the Rural Water Show, we have a voting delegate to attend, that attends the annual meeting and is a representative of the city to participate in voting. So this year, I'm just looking at a motion to approve Danny Walker as the City of Linsburg voting delegate, and Chris Lomond, City alternate voting delegate.
So he drew the, he draws the wrong, he does.
He's pretty much guaranteed he's going to be there.
All right. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
You want us to just approve those instead of vote or vote? I'm looking to approve the persons whom you have suggested.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Danny Walker as the voting delegate, and Chris Lomond as the alternate voting delegate. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Municipal energy.
Similar type situation with the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. The board of directors, we have a director number one, position director number two, and an alternate director number one, which I currently serve in that position, expires April 30th this year, and so this would be to appoint a person to that position, and recommending myself to serve in that capacity.
Motion to approve Greg Newmar's as director number one for the city of Linsburg to serve. Call the Kansas Municipal Energy on the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency Board of Directors.
Second.
You have consented to approve Greg Dunars as the Director Number One position, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Congratulations, Greg.
No, thank you.
All right.
There are two changes in the personnel policy. One deals with emergency policy for exempt employees under the declaration of an emergency. By exempt employees, those are people on salary. The, this would be adding two positions to that, the Assistant City Administrator and the City Clerk. Under that policy, it would make them eligible for overtime in those situations. There's been one time in twenty years that we've ever had an emergency that we see this level that any salaried official has received overtime.
Is that 2013?
Yes.
So the motion is.
Oh, and then the second, I'm sorry, the second change is adding vaping or prohibiting vaping on city property or in city vehicles. And that includes whether it's nicotine or non-nicotine based vaping system.
And that's to prohibit?
To prohibit, yes.
These separate motions?
They can be, you can make the motion to approve the changes in the Linsburg personnel policy.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the city of Linsburg personnel policy as presented.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
Can we approve?
I have a question. So, so was the city, is that, City Clerk hasn't been approved or included in that before?
No.
Okay, so it's not because there's been a change in the status, the City Clerk gets.
There's been a change in the status.
I, I, I'm the individual, I should have said, that's unrelated.
That's unrelated, correct.
And then has vaping become a problem?
We are, it's being proactive as opposed to being reactive. I'm not aware of any employees currently that vape on duty or in city vehicles. Just trying to get in front of it. It is, the, the level of vaping use is increasing, so I think it's more a matter of when as opposed to if. And so we're trying to be proactive on this particular issue. This is a good move.
Just because it hasn't happened so far, I think it will happen, so it's good to be doing this now.
Who do you declare as local emergency manager? Actually, the there, technically, in the policy, the there contacts county emergency management. And, and will be going quite if it's been, well, actually, that was declared state emergency in the fight in 2013, but it was declared emergency on the county level.
So on that, if, if it does happen, yeah, but it should, but, I mean, there's a possibility with including this in here, they should help us maybe with subpoena reimbursement?
Yes, yeah, if, by having this, that's what really drove this policy, is subpoena will reimburse up to seventy-five percent of that overtime cost. Additionally, and it all depends on where the Kansas Department of Emergency Management is at the time on their policy, they usually reimburse an additional fifteen percent, so you get about a ninety percent reimbursement. Their policy fluctuates at the state level. I think it's down about five percent now, but it's been as high as fifteen percent.
Okay, any other questions about this?
One more related question, and, and I applaud the move to be proactive. The related question is, did, I remember this being a discussion, but I don't remember any action. Did we ever develop or adopt, I guess, an ordinance to prohibit vaping business in our business district? In the zoning?
Well, we don't have one that prohibits that would be a zoning issue, and that issue has never come before, planning a zoning commission.
Thought we talked about it last time, we were talking about protecting our, our business district. Okay.
I, I, well, when you talk about business district, are you talking downtown and Harrison Cole or are you talking?
Talking, do we want a vaping business anywhere in this community?
Can, can Vansville sell vaping materials or whatever it is?
Well, I think they can, I don't know for sure, but I think they can. It's not a, a controlled product.
But yet, do we, what, are they called hookah bar? Like they, like they, like it popped up in the line?
I'm not aware of any zoning regulations that have been allowed that would prohibit that. I mean, you're talking about a legal, unregulated retail business. I think you'd be hard pressed to make an ordinance stand up that would prohibit them.
Thank you.
On my trip to Holy Land, there are lots of hookah bars all over the place, so. All right, any other questions or concerns about this? We have a motion and a second. Can we just do this by a voice vote, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion does pass. The next item is.
It's an invoice from Smoke State who has done the design, preliminary design work on Port of the Stage. As Larry has reached out to them to get their, their employer identification, tax ID numbers. Actually, Dour Welding is supposed to be paying this invoice and they're supposed to turn around and invoice us. So how you want to handle this, I don't know.
Wait till we get some kind of contact?
I don't know, Larry, you know, I'm sorry, David.
All right, we'll get that on until next, also me?
Yeah, we can do that, that's fine.
You want to do that?
I said we could do that. I would do that, but you're mayor.
All right, no executive session on zoning?
No.
Others, anyone having others? I just have a question for Chris. On the street sweeper?
Yes.
Where did you decide on what for?
They have an individual coming in on Thursday, I believe, with a second bid. He's trying to set up a, another demonstration with the dirt sweeper that keeps this all on the same level. They're the same, if you didn't see the different colors and the different brands, they almost look like the same machine. They're that close in how they operate. So we're getting, we're getting real close. I've got it on that, that's coming in for a couple of weeks or next month, I believe, so we're getting close to. A lot of money, so we want to make sure we're getting what we need to get.
The, the concern or the issue raised by Mr. Kinsey, I'm sure there's a warrant story there with regard to the cycle of reimbursement.
That forty-six million dollars is for retail customers, not wholesale customers. And we're, through KBA, have filed a complaint along with Kansas Electric Power Cooperatives against West Star. And really what this skims from is their change in the tax laws, federal tax law, and it, I can't remember the number that it saves them, West Star. But we have filed a complaint at FERC for KBA member cities, it would be about four hundred thousand dollars and roughly ninety-two thousand, that would be our program share of that. It was filed earlier this month, so it could be four, five, six months before the decision's made on it. But that forty-six million dollars is a KCC order for retail customers.
Thank you. The other issue that you did bring up about Christmas decorating is something that has been talked about. People look into other communities, their cities have paid for and own all of their Christmas decorating and all of that. That has not been a part really of Linsburg history, at least, I don't remember it being a part of Linsburg history. So it's, it is, it has been handled by, at one time, it was the Chamber of Commerce and then now AdHoc talks about it. So we are, we city, or AdHoc, we're discussing it and if there is, and did you get funded on that one? That, that, no, okay, sorry. Sure?
Sorry, maybe clarify it, AdHoc is more the problem. We funded the lights, thus far, volunteers put up the lights, listed up in the city on the higher trees. But the lights downtown are fully funded by the AdHoc. And some, we tried to put out some donation cans and do a couple of honor interest group. It's largely funded by those AdHoc group.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, there, wasn't there a request for lighting that went to the first round of the, from the NUT trust that was awarded?
If it was, David Hay would know about it.
Yes.
Yes, he was, he was, I filled the grant out, but I was not notified. He would have been notified and he hasn't said anything to me about it, so. I'm getting ready to ask him.
They did, they did, okay, all right. Anyway, just if people do ask you about that, what the city contributes is labor and equipment to hang high lights.
And who lights the bridge?
AdHoc and money raised and volunteers. Merle Larson was one of the, I don't know how many years he's been doing it, about two, three, four. And he is one that organized it and people volunteered to help him, but it is all strictly volunteer.
Is that what is normal for some accounts in my, my city time?
Well, it, I don't know what's normal, but I mean, I've been told that there's a lot of towns. I counted, I mentioned like Waukegan that he was talking about, if you've ever seen pictures of what Waukegan has, oh my goodness, they have.
It is safe, it is, it is safe. It's, to answer your question on is it normal, there is a lot of normal. I mean, we, it's probably been ten plus years, but we surveyed several different communities and it's everything from a Waukegan situation to where, and to other places where they don't, the city doesn't help at all. I mean, they don't provide any kind of anything, so it's just, you know, there's not any normal.
Great, all of Waukegan's lighting, at least half of the new light was paid for by the Hanson Foundation?
Okay. Maybe just, since you mentioned Merle, Merle Larson puts in hours and hours downtown streaming the lights. We always try to ask, provide assistance, but he just goes out and does it and he's a great service to the community. And then Carmen Alguas does a lot of the bridge, you will ask him about the bridge, I think he's led the charge on the bridge for quite a few years. All volunteer.
David said, yes, they did get money from the NUT foundation, he thought about fifteen hundred dollars.
Which in the Christmas lighting world is not the same. It's, that's not fair at all, so it is something that AdHoc is discussing, you know, what more do we want for, for the light or whatever. So, but nothing other than fifteen hundred dollars applies in the light world, so. All right, do I hear a motion for adjourn?
So moved?
Again, the day released?